The council has called to order, and at this time I'd like to invite all of you to please stand and join me in deciding the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the regular city council agenda. Is there any council member, any one in the audience that wishes to add any items to the regular agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve it as printed. Motion has been made to second it to adopt the regular agenda discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The consent agenda is before the council, and all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered separately in its normal sequence on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience or any member of the council who wishes to either add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made seconded to approve the consent agenda as printed, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The minutes of the regular city council meeting, which was held March 14th, 2023, before the council. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to make any corrections or changes to the minutes? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as printed. So moved. Motion has been made seconded to approve the minutes of the March 14th, 2023 city council meeting, discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have some representatives here from the Detroit Lakes High School baseball team that wishes to, I think, give us some money tonight and make a few comments, so. The floor is yours. Maybe introduce yourselves, gentlemen.
Hi, guys. I'm Mason Auburn.
I'm Nelson Stick.
We're seniors at Detroit Lakes High School, and we had a senior capstone project this year. And basically, we had to try to find a way in our community, some way to try to help, not necessarily fix the problem, but maybe find any somewhat of a solution. So what we did, we did Washington Ballpark. Washington Ballpark, for me, has been part of my life. It's up, maybe this pick. But what we did, we sold raffle tickets to the public at $10 apiece. And what that did, we raised just around $2,070. And what we had, we did prizes, and everything we had was donated to us. Our raffle tickets were donated by President Phipping. We had a couple, Lake Broadcasting donated a couple prizes, and so did American, and we had a couple cash prizes as well.
Some of the prizes were Fargo Force tickets, passes to Nickelodeon, and American Express punch card. Then we had two cash prizes, third place was $100 that we gave away, and fourth place was $50.
So, yeah, we got, we had a nice little help with our family and friends at the last minute to help us push over that 2,000 mark, which was an extreme help. We presented this project to our school, our classmates, and the public in around January time. But we just have this nice check that we'd like to get to Sunday.
We got Heidi, our finance officer, right there. And as you all know, we have some great plans to renovate Washington Parks.
Thank you.
We appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Without objection, I'm going to adjust a couple items because there's folks here that are here for certain things. Without objection, I'd like to go to Public Works Committee, item 6F, Chairman Zeman.
Okay, item 6F is consideration to resolution authorizing the preparations of preliminary engineering parts for Willow Springs. We're going to call on our engineer, John, and give us an update on that.
Sure. Mayor and council, we've been looking at this project for a number of years, I think most of you recall. And it's been on our capital improvement plan, and it felt like it was a prudent time.
Can everybody hear you?
No.
Changes.
Carry, is this mic on, audio?
Or not?
How's that?
That's better.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay. It felt like a prudent time to bring this forward, try to actually advance the project. So there was a petition that was submitted to the city, signed by the required number of adjoining property owners that requesting the city to do a feasibility study or preliminary engineering report for the improvements out at Willow Springs. I would note that the project is limited per the petition to just street improvements. In other words, they are not requesting sewer water improvements at this time, only the street improvements. So that's the action that's before the council tonight. We would prepare a report, and ultimately that would go into a public hearing at some future point. Some notion that maybe we will be able to get the project off the ground this year. That might be a little tight, but we'll see how that goes as we advance.
I know there's a few folks here from Willow Springs. Do you have any questions for our city engineer?
At the moment, no, just when can we get the street?
How quickly can we do it? Yeah, it's, I mean, to answer the question, maybe a little more detail. There's a process that we have to follow, the special assessments, and the report is the first one, and then it's a hearing, then it's authorizing, designed, then it's up ordering bids, approving those. So there's, you know, about a four-month lead time. Does that mean we maybe can get something done late this year? Possibly, not ruling it out yet.
Is there, is there anything to fix the potholes we have now?
It's probably a long list right now for Sean, but he's here, he's listening, so they can check it out. As soon as the weather's conducive here, I'm sure they're going to be going through lots of patch.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I do have some comments that we did discuss when we had the meeting here with all the folks in the neighborhood and when they sent a petition to us about whether or not we wanted to have city lights in. And there were some people that did, some that didn't, but after checking with city staff, it almost works out best that everybody's on the same page with lights because we charge everybody in town against electrical bill use for city lights, whether you have them there or not, but we kind of like to have every neighborhood have lights in them. So we're probably going to have to go ahead and, unless you really show a good reason why you don't want to have lights out there. But just, just because it is part of the city, we have everybody on the same track on that.
Okay, so at this time, we give a consideration to resolution authorizing the preparations of preliminary engineering report for Willow Springs, a committee record.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to adopt a resolution authorizing the preparation of the preliminary engineers' report for Willow Springs. Discussion?
I've got a comment, go ahead, or a question, or, I guess. So this is Willow Springs, we've been talking about for a long time. We had a meeting at Pavilion back when we approved the capital improvements project listing back in 2021. At that meeting, it seems like some people thought that this was a done deal, we're just going to put the road in. That wasn't what we discussed back then, that was what we were talking about, the entire capital improvement plan. It wasn't Willow Springs specific. Some people think that we should just go ahead and just put the road in and no services. We talked about the streetlights, and we shouldn't, you know, put those in, or we should put those in. This is kind of a bigger conversation on, do we bring people into the city without services? It has an impact on what we do, whether it's development and what we require going forward. So I have a tough time just saying, you know, you're going to pick and choose what you get or what you want. So I guess I, we don't, we don't have all the information in front of us. We don't know what the special assessment is. Is the city going to take part in this, or is it just the neighborhood that's going to be paying for the street? I don't know what the intention is, but there was a lot of questions yesterday, and it wasn't real clear that the city was going to be taking part in this street improvement, whether it was just going to be the neighborhood, it was going to be doing a street improvement, and what impact does that have on future development and/or use of your property out there in Willow Springs? Because you've got people out there that are on first, second, third septic systems, and you're running out of space out there. We put this road in, you asked for this road, it's 25, 30 years down the road, and what do you do with that septic? Because it all has to come out of that house, and it's got to go someplace. Either you have to pump it out every six weeks, or your septic system fails, or the MPCA says you can't do anything, and now you're going to come back looking at the city saying, why did you let us do this? So I, I have a tough time spending $5,000 to $10,000 on this engineering report when we get to the point where we get those numbers back, and it's all on the property owners. I think we might need to have a little bit more discussion amongst the council up here, so.
Well, one thing, and I think we've got to be fair with the neighborhood, is when we had that meeting at Pavilion, it was, I think there was only one or two people who were in favor of that, I remember you're one was, was one of them. And I, I just think that those people, this is what the, one of the, were locked into that neighborhood, and we pretty much agreed to that council at that time. We were all in the pressure it was going to be done within the next 18 months, and they were still waiting to have it put in. But some other things that have come up on this also, like Dan mentioned about some of the cost. The city utilities paid some of this, as long as we're getting water and sewer and electrical and all that kind of put in. And they pay a portion, but now, with that not happening, we had some numbers at this meeting on the 30th that was based on having water and sewer numbers. And so the price is going to be a little different when we come back here next month on that. And John's going to give us the full update on that. But we're going to have to see where that all works in, and see what all you think about that when we get this all said and done on it. So, John, so our engineer will work on that, and we'll come back with it, and we'll, we'll look if we have a rural section, how we're going to come out on this, but we're going to try to come up with the best price we can for you.
Go ahead, Matt.
Mr. Bryant, you mentioned road improvements. Does that include curb and gutter?
It could. That's undefined, I would say. Road improvements is pretty broad, right? So I suspect the report will probably have a couple of options. If one would be an urban street with curb and gutter, another one would be a rural section, more like what's out there right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sean?
Yeah, as a resident of Willow Springs Road, I'd like to first echo what Mr. Zeman said, that, you know, we all walked away from that meeting expecting that this was going to happen in the next 18 months. And then, you know, then we got a letter that said it was being delayed, and then another year went by and we didn't hear anything. And that's what's kind of prompted this request. The, most of the homes out there were, you know, have all of their utilities, everything coming out the back. So there's expense and considerations with that, which I'm sure is not the first time we've dealt with that as a city, so I'll qualify that. And to Dan's point as well, maybe we need to have this discussion. I mean, this discussion also digs into the, you know, how are we going to assess this? When we said we were going to do utilities, we said we'd pay for, the city would pay for 50% of the road. And yesterday, the statement was made, well, if we're not doing utilities, this is considered new because the road, the paved portion of the road is not built to city specs, and the unpaid portion was never paved. And the residents out there, myself included, are just generally frustrated. 10 years went by prior to annexation, that there weren't really any improvements from the township because the township knew what was going to happen. Then we were annexed, there wasn't an orderly annexation agreement that says we're going to do utilities, we're going to do all of these things. And now we're sitting here in a situation where many of us have been there for, you know, 10, 20, 30 years. We've got mortgages, we've got interest rates, we've got payments, we've got budgets that we've calculated. And it's different when you're going into a new development, or you have some sort of orderly annexation agreement where we've, where we've come in and we've said, hey, we're budgeting for this, we include this in the price of the home, whatever those things are. I think when we're coming in and we're annexing a place like this, and I understand what the ordinances say, but it's tough on the residents to come in and say, hey, I've got a, you know, X hundred thousand dollar mortgage with this payment at this interest rate over this period of time, and now we're going to put 10, 20, 40, 60, 80,000 dollars of assessments on top of you at, at an interest rate. And that's probably going to delay, you know, rapid mortgage payments and things like that, so it's a compounding effect. And I think as we talk about this project, and just in general, how we want to, how we want to do this going forward, I think we need to consider those situations. Because when we're coming in and annexing a location, that's different than a developer saying, I want to, I want to add to the city. And these are residents with established locations, and it's impactful on them, and it's difficult on them. And residents of Willow Springs want something done with the road so that it's passable. You know, it's, it's constantly full of, you know, full of potholes and mucky, and the pavement portions falling apart, and they're frustrated.
And then one, one thing I'd like to say that we asked, because I said, are you absolutely sure you don't want to have city water and sewer? They don't want anything to do with it, and we've heard that before, we keep hearing it. So if that's what they want, and they're in that section by themselves, I just think we've asked the details as how they want to have it. So give them what they want as far as I'm concerned.
Further comments? We have a motion and a second on the table for the discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Without objection. Can we go to item 6H?
Okay, all right, 6H. Next consideration to approve this special event application with Cleveland Baseball Club home games for the summer 2023 in Washington Ballpark. I've been visiting with Brandon Johnson, he's sitting back there in the audience. And, you know, we discussed this a little bit yesterday, but here's what's happening for the new people on the council. When we have these food trucks, they're really not supposed to be on any public streets where they set up. And there's a way to get around it, and everybody's kind of discovered that now. The exception is, if we say we're going to apply for a special event license, then we can park any place we want on public streets. And so it's getting to be happening too much, and we're getting restaurants that are saying, you know, when this thing first started out with food trucks, they're all going to go over and be the industrial park, and be there when people have lunch, and be where other businesses were. But now, you know, that, that bird didn't fly very well, about six months, and they found out that they couldn't make, make a living off of the industrial parks. So now they're back, and they're trying to go for the best locations, and that's usually around where there's other restaurants. And so what's happening now with, there's going to be 13 home games, and we don't exactly know how many food trucks show up on that. Kelsey can tell you that from Rotary, when we had that Trucks and Toons, you know, one week you might have three trucks, and next week you'd have eight trucks. And that's the same thing here, we don't know how many trucks. But I do know that the people that own restaurants and make a living year-round off after paying taxes, they're concerned because it's, they've got to be there and pay the bills, and a food truck, he's got bills too, but it's not like that owns a business. So I talked a little bit with, with Brandon about, and he said, well, we just wanted to kind of come up with a way we needed to have some type of way to make some fundraising, and we thought this might work out good. But it does work out for them, but Brandon says, well, maybe we have to look at how many home games we set up 13, maybe we only do it for half those games, and maybe we limit to how many trucks we have for food trucks. So what I'd like to do is maybe push this off to next month so we can sit down and not only look at this, this food truck ordinance for this project, but for all the other projects that we have involving food trucks, because there's more and more events all the time. And everybody realizes that if I can get on a public street, that's where I'm going to do more business versus back at some parking lot or whatever. So if it's okay with everybody here in the council, we can move this out to next month and have some more discussion on this and see when we come up with a plan, just in general, not only for this project, but for other projects that use the food truck. And then we do it for the street fair, and we do Crazy Days, and, you know, we have arts and parades and things like that. But there's, there's going to be more and more food trucks coming out. And I have to say, I, I can see where the restaurant owners don't think it's fair because they are paying taxes year-round on this, and it does kind of take business away from them when you're sitting right across the street from the front door. So if it's all right with it, if we can just move this into next month for further discussion.
Gentlemen, you okay with delaying it for a month, or how does that fit with your timeline?
Could I just share a word, just so we can?
Sure. Come on up here, so we can hear you.
Loud enough, but I'll come to Mike. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Brandon Johnson. Is there a button even? Oh, green light and everything. My name's Brandon Johnson, I am the player manager of the Detroit Lakes Baseball Club. We're rebranding now as the Detroit Lakes Ligers. Our, our goal and our vision is to use our national pastime to celebrate and engage our community. And the way that we do that is in an effort to try to work with local businesses in this. So just, there's a couple things that were said that I want to make sure you hear from our end, because, uh, but you're Zeman, unfortunately. Some things that were said were not correct. First off, the food trucks that we would go to, we would set up ahead of time. I would, I don't want to have more than two or three, because I want them to be these local businesses, not just the ones that are traveling all around, I want Detroit Lakes specific ones. Second off, this is not a fundraising thing for us. We are not going to ask or request a single dime from any one of the food trucks in any way. Our fundraising and sponsorship, we have done in other ways, and it's part of our mission. So each one of our home games is in fact a celebration of a local community organization or business. So they, they basically pay the fees that it costs us to put on a baseball game, and then we use that night to celebrate them. We want to use our home games to celebrate and engage our community. We saw this as a vision of the next step, to be able to bring in businesses, for example, like Woodfire Pizza, things like that. Now again, at no point has a food truck reached out to us. This was our idea, and at no point was this a fundraising effort. This was an effort to, again, celebrate and engage our community by using baseball. Because who doesn't want to spend a beautiful night at Washington Ballpark on a wonderful summer evening, especially with the renovations that are coming? I was a part of amateur baseball years ago. Part of bringing it back and rebranding is to make sure that it is Detroit Lakes specific. Hence, the new team name, the team logo, all that, being as unique as possible, because we are as unique as possible as a community, and we want to celebrate that. So that is what this event is more about. It's more to use our home games to be a platform for more community engagement, not anything to in any way benefit us. Because we don't even charge admission at games, it's not like, there's, there's no monetary gain that we get from this. So it is purely to celebrate and engage our community businesses.
Thank you. So without objection by the council, we could table this until next month. Any objections? No cases?
I guess, I guess what I, I've got, we had a conversation yesterday at the Public Works Committee, and there's one, one path of, no, we don't want to have food trucks. There's other path of, we've got avenues of special events where we do have food trucks, and I don't see them being, you know, one way is, is good, and one way is bad, you know? We've got taxpaying brick and mortar buildings out there. We also have food trucks that have brick and mortar presence here in town too. So I don't see this really as a, we're setting up shop across the street from Zorbus. This is more of a special event, it's 13 times, it's in a special location. And, yeah, I think we should have a, have a conversation about this, and if we need to table it to have that conversation, I think we should do that, but we should have an intention of creating what we're looking at, not just, you can have it in the park, you can have it on the north side of town, you can have it in these special locations because it is a baseball park, and it should be a venue where you can go and have fun. And if you've got a concession stand there, you've got a concession stand. If you don't have a concession stand, then you've got the option of walking across the street, going to Domino's or to Subway, or wherever it might be. But I, I think it's the choice of the person who's got the $20 bill in their pocket, whether they want to have Woodfire, Woodfire Pizza or a Subway sandwich. I don't think we should be dictating all of this stuff, and we need to have a deeper conversation if we want to table this.
Are you okay to table it? If not, you can make a motion.
I guess I'd make a motion to approve the 13, 13 events for the Detroit Lakes Baseball Club to have food trucks at their location on, is that, Cameron Road Street? On Langford Street.
I suppose, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made seconded to approve the food truck situation for the ballpark and the baseball games. Further discussion?
You know, I, I just, I just think that we need to get together and get on the same page with this food truck. Because it, council and his staff, they get involved in food trucks all over town during the summertime. So it isn't just one or two events, and I, and I just, you know, I heard him say we're going to have two or three trucks. But I, but I, I think if we can get, get together and sit and talk about this, just enough for his project, but for all the other events that we're going to use with, with these food trucks, because we certainly don't want to have people running up and down, parking, parking on all these streets just because they have a special event. That's the, that's kind of what's happening now. Everybody wants a special event because they can park on public streets, and we said that was going to be parked as when we started this. So I, I think we're talking two different things, and I just think we have to sit down and discuss them before we go any further on this.
Sean? I don't think we need to write this second, but I would like to know which ordinance or ordinances apply to food trucks and their operation inside of the city, because there's a lot of ordinances, and I'm not always clear on which one is which. But a follow-up would be sufficient for my purposes.
Mayor, council, real quick, it's the transient merchant license, part of the code. I can't tell you the code off the top of my head, but it's transient merchant.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to bring up the transient merchant license. That, that does dictate where a person can and cannot set up the food truck, and you have to keep it moving, and you can't just park in one location. And if it's, it's that, that's kind of what we went down, that path, the transient merchant license. So, yeah, you can't just set up shop in front of somebody else's business, punch all their, all their customers. This is a special event, so I, I think we should go ahead and approve it for a local, that we've got people putting on and pouring effort into.
Fair, I guess I would agree with, I guess I would agree with this. We've got to address this at, at hand. I think it's only fair to the baseball team and the community to get this out, publish it and work on that. Although I do agree, Ron, I think we do need to sit down and look at this and address it and discuss what this looks like moving forward. That being said, I think we take this as is, and we address it and move forward.
Okay, if we would do that, because Brandon, you said that you'd be happy with two or three trucks when we put 11 on it?
Yeah, because again, when I want those trucks to go there, I want it to be worth their while. And I've worked in restaurants for over a decade, I'm a teacher now, but I understand that. So I would want, you know, one beverage option, one kind of entree, and one dessert at most. I, I don't want to fill the street, I don't want that to be some crazy thing, like there's going to be baseballs flying around at some point. So we want to be lively and responsible that way too. So no more than two or three.
Well, if we're going to make a motion off this, I'd like to amend that motion that we have no more than three trucks.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I would make that a second time.
Okay. Discussion on the amended motion.
You have to vote for the amendment first, and then?
Glad you're here.
Sorry.
All in favor of the amendment, amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Amended motion carries, and then we?
Then you vote on the approval as amended.
So the approval will be a maximum of three trucks? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. I think there was enough discussion here though, Kelsey, if we could put this back on to the Public Works Committee for a future discussion about food trucks. Thank you. Without objection, I'd like to move to the Community Development Committee, item 5D, may I have?
5D, consideration of first reading ordinance 507, amending zoning ordinance to add Section 10A, Neighborhood Commercial District. This was discussed last night, I'll let Kelsey and Larry fill in the holes, but this was discussed last night at CDC. It was a lively, colorful debate. This came from us with a planning commission that was a positive recommendation to move forward. There is an updated ordinance in front of you, and the ordinance change that was made last night was to mirror the R2 district from what our verbiage has in other ordinances to mirror into this new neighborhood commercial 10A. So that's what the, the discussion was last night at CDC. There was disparate varying opinions on that, that I'm sure we'll get into here shortly. But Larry, Kelsey, any other updates from there?
I think you've covered everything. It was all good. Didn't sound like it. I'm glad you can all hear me, because I couldn't hear myself. But the planning commission recommended approval of the Neighborhood Commercial
But the planning commission recommended approval of the neighborhood commercial district without gas stations as a conditional use and it was amended by the CDC to change the residential to match our R2 district. So I think Matt covered it very well.
The one thing I want to remind everybody on council as well as the audience is this is addressing the neighborhood commercial tool. This is not addressing land that this may or may not be used in the future. So this is a tool in the toolbox that we're going to be discussing, not applications where this can be used. So.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to ask any questions or make any comments regarding what we're proposing to do? And maybe we should get a motion to get, this will be the first reading, right Matt?
This will be the first reading, yes.
Do you want to make a motion to get on the table?
Shaun, you want to make that motion?
Sure. I move to approve the neighborhood commercial zoning ordinance as proposed with the modifications to include the one and two family dwelling units.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to give first reading to ordinance 507, amending our zoning ordinance to add section 10A Neighborhood Commercial District. And of course, if we adopt the first reading, this will come back next month for a second reading. Discussion by the council. I didn't hear any questions from the audience, but discussion from the council.
Okay, I've put a few things on here. Neighborhood commercial district, what does this really mean to the residents of Detroit Lakes and our city? Majority of our homeowners of Detroit Lakes have an R2 zoning neighborhood. They've had this for many years ago. When they've come about their home, they were told what they could have in an R2, just one and two family homes majority unless there's a, there's no use of apartment or whatever. But mainly it's one or two family homes. No large scale businesses, no big box stores, no gas stations, no car lodges, just homes. Most of the residents that live in R2 housing districts want to come home to a peace and quiet away from work life and commercial businesses that they've come home to, be able to come home and, and live in that apartment. This past fall, the winter, we had two large projects that wanted to move into R2 neighborhoods. One project was the East Shore, an even tight care center for Morehead, and then we had a strip mall application for South Shore. Both of these projects met disapproval by the neighboring neighborhoods. Once again, the people in these neighborhoods wanted a life with a family environment, place for their kids to come home and play and enjoy themselves, not more traffic from businesses nearby. Why should current R2 residents have to accept the zoning ordinance that would be called a neighborhood commercial district and disrupt their lives? Resident homeowners no longer trust their city leaders after what's happened with these last two meetings, when the city can change an R2 zoning after many years of being an R2 district for neighborhoods that will now become a commercial district, regardless of what part of town it's in. This new commercial district will cover every area of town, whether it's north side, south south, east or west, it could come into your neighborhood if there's space next door to you. Detroit Lakes currently has a huge housing shortage for all income levels, whether it's workforce housing or high-end housing. Last year, we had only 23 new houses built in Detroit Lakes. Talking to a realtor here just the other day, said at this time, currently in Detroit Lakes, we only have five homes listed in the city of Detroit Lakes city limits. We have more than enough vacant lots though for commercial businesses, whether it's on Highway 10, Highway 59, Highway 34. We have many empty blocks and we have many buildings that are sitting empty that could use a business, but we do not have these businesses to come for. To me, it would make more sense for our city and staff to spend their time to work at finding housing. Without housing for people to come to move to our area, they can come and apply for a job and get a good job, but if you can't find a home to live, they're not going to come to our city. Let's, let's go ahead and work on housing and forget what we're talking about here tonight with this new project for businesses. What happens to our two neighborhoods? Well, one of our neighbors died in one of these new commercial districts and after a few months or a few years, the lights go on on these businesses and they close their doors. What happens then and how does this affect the feeling of viability of a residential neighborhood when you have empty businesses sitting next door across the street? I, I think that we're, we're moving too fast on this and we should do more research on, on the overall plans down the road of what this could really look like if we started getting these put in and we looked at half-empty strip malls. We want to be successful in any project that we do and, and to see if this is really needed for our neighborhoods. So let's do what's right for the citizens of Detroit Lakes. And one last question, would you as a council member like to have this next door to your house or across the street and have you talk to your neighbors in your residential area and ask them, would you like to have this? I've already had some talk from my neighbors. So I'm just saying, I'm not a favorite. I, I know it's a place for businesses, but I, I'm, I'm looking at this, we're talking groceries and food service and bookstores and I, we already have that in town and you don't be different where in town with hundreds of people, we're 10,000 people. You can leave from South Shore and be downtown in five minutes. I, I just, it's not like we're driving for a half hour to get to someplace in my little bread. So that's my feelings and I know everybody else has got feelings of ours too.
Any further comments?
Dan? Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. Yeah, living down in that neck of the woods, that you're talking South Shore Drive being five minutes away, it's not five minutes away, it's a little longer than that. We're not talking about specifics in this case, we're not talking about East Shore Drive, we're not talking about South Shore Drive, we're talking about a tool in our toolbox to do neighborhood commercial. We're talking about neighborhood commercial, it's a place of fictitious area. We're not talking about any specifics here, we're not talking about a gas station. Well, maybe we should be talking about a gas station because this would be the tool to regulate what a gas station could look like in neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial could be anywhere within the city, city limits, but it all has to be rezoned and there's a process for rezoning and it goes through the planning commission, it goes through public hearings, and we don't just plop down neighborhood commercial in somebody else's backyard. And that's what we're talking about here is creating a tool within this. And if we're going to make neighborhood commercial exactly like R2, why have R2 and why have neighborhood commercial? My contention here is why don't we put the D back in that was proposed in the original as presented to the planning commission, which is about gas stations. It does allow for gas stations as a conditional use. It's not allowed as a, as a primitive use, so you do need to go through the process, go through the planning commission to have a gas station in this zone. You have to go through the city council and have it approved and it has to meet the requirements set forth with this, which I think are a little bit too tight for, you know, somebody who wants to come to our town and build in our community. We talk about housing, we talk about amenities. If we are going to talk about South Shore Drive being five minutes away from downtown to go to Walmart, great. I grew up on East Shore Drive, I rode my bike down to Castaway Hotel and I got my pack of bubble gum and I got my baseball cards and it didn't ruin my life. We had Flierside there, we had a narrow little road. My parents let me go up there. Sometimes they knew that I was out there, sometimes they didn't. Didn't get it on over. It isn't bad to have these tools in our box. It is just something that we have the ability to say, yes, we want to have some controlled development in areas. And that's where, I don't think dumbing this down to the exactly like R2 is a good thing. I think this needs to be its own little tool where we can say, this is what we can put in this little posters stamp piece on our, our community. So I don't know where I'm going to stand on this and whether we are there in favor of it or be opposed to it because in this current state with the amendments of being R2, I might be opposed to it. So those are my comments from now.
Shaun, did you have something?
I did. You know, first I wanted to comment on the planning commission discussion. You know, we've had... We're getting closer, is that better?
Yep.
First, I wanted to comment just on the discussion we had in planning commission. You know, personally, I feel we've stripped this back to the point of being so restrictive that it's not useful. But I also think we did, we did a great job of listening to our residents and taking out the things that were most controversial, namely the gas stations. I think John Lowery, when addressing the CDC last night, made an excellent point. This neighborhood commercial zone is in our comprehensive plan. We haven't defined what that means, so we're doing a disservice to developers that potentially want to come into our community. So if we create this, we put the tool in our toolbox and we've said, okay, this is what we expect. If you want to use this, ask for it. If this doesn't meet your need, don't ask for it. And time will tell whether it's too restrictive or not in and of itself. When I look at what's in here, grocery and food service stores, you know, barber shops, gift stores, craft stores, vision centers, fitness businesses, you know, these are all things, are designed to serve a local area, to provide services to the residents that live there so they don't have to drive from the other side of Long Lake or the south side of the lake or the east side of the lake or wherever we decide to apply this. But to your point, Ben, we don't, this doesn't apply at anywhere. That application happens through an entire repeat of this process with public hearings. Well, it's got to come as a request and then the public hearings and then the discussion and the approval. And I don't want to belabor that, but I think it's really important to know that I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of saying, hey, let's go into the middle of an existing neighborhood and rezone it. That's not really the purpose of this, but it is, it does give us the tools to say as we grow, how do we want to serve those residents? And it gives us the tools to be very specific about what we want in those areas. I don't want to use a number two screwdriver to tighten the screw on my, tighten the lens screw on my glasses when I'm wearing. This is, this is that, that screwdriver that's made for that purpose. And I think this is really critical for us to have in our toolbox. Whether it lasts to its current form, Ben, I'm not sure, but I think it's a great compromise for what our citizens have asked for repeatedly through this process. Thank you, Mr. Brandon.
Go ahead, Matt.
Looking at this, I think it's, a lot of good things have come over this and in this process and in listening to homeowners. What I want to focus on is not one person, but where this is applied in town. And honestly, I wish we had this when we redesigned Highway 10. I wish we had this tool when we built Holiday Gas Station that puts up against neighborhood R2 development. We didn't and we threw in a Taj Mahal of a Holiday Station there. Could something smaller, better fit there? Maybe, maybe not. I don't know. That's gone. Now we have this tool moving forward to other parts of town to what we want to do. That being said, I, looking at this, I think we've done a very good job of restricting this and tying it down so tight that a developer is going to look at this and go, well, I can't do it in there, I'm going to go next town down, I'm going to look elsewhere. You only have one opportunity to make a good presentation, make a first impression. I think we need to, and I would like to amend the motion to, Ron, to your point too, I think we're moving a little bit too quick to this. I think we table this and send it back to planning commission and have them relook at everything again. Because I think this is too restrictive the way it is.
So you're amending the motion to untable it?
Yeah, a motion to table is not debatable and it would have to be seconded, that's what he's planning to do.
Correct.
I didn't get, Matt, whether you were amending the motion or table it.
According to Charlie, I'd like to make another motion to table it. Is that correct, what I want to do?
You make a motion to table, which then it's tabled and, and we don't amend the first motion.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to deny this as presented and bring it back to the planning commission next month.
Table it. Table it.
Table it, thank you, sorry.
Is there a second?
So we're not, I'm sorry, we're not denying it, we're tabling it.
We're tabling it, which means that it's still live for next, next month and you could, if, if the made motion to table is approved.
Yes.
All that does is delays it another month, okay? You can send it back to planning, but no more discussion, it's tabled, it's gone, it isn't denied and it isn't approved.
I would, I would like to make a motion to table this and send it back to planning commission next meeting.
And it's been seconded.
I'll second it. I think it already was, but no?
Okay, now it is. Is that all I see?
No, we got any discussion?
There's no debate on a motion.
No discussion on it. There's no discussion on a table any motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Item's tabled. Is there anyone else in the audience that hasn't?
Who made the motion first, second to the first motion?
Second to the first motion, Mike.
Second to your first motion. I couldn't tell. Okay. I couldn't tell. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has an item on the agenda that you would like me to move up? So you can go up, enjoy the nice weather. If not, we'll just go back to the top of the agenda. Okay, we're back to the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 5A, consideration of the request for Project 412 to place murals on the DLCCC and the retaining wall on the east side of the lower parking lot at the Washington Square Mall. Ms. Sterns was here last night, presented to us. They're looking to place two murals on the corners of the pool at the DLCC, on the stucco portions there, as well as that east side of the wall facing the title company. I believe that's Minnesota Avenue there. It was discussed at CDC last night and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I believe it was the west side of that retaining.
Facing west, you're right, on the east side of parking lot, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the request to place murals in the Detroit Lakes Community and Cultural Center and the retaining wall for the Washington Square Mall parking lot. And is there further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries?
Thank you. Item 5B, consideration of the resolution approving the final plat of Southwood Shores Estates at 557 South Shore Drive. Larry, your, Kelsey, any information there?
This is a seven lot residential plat. It's in an area that's owned R2 and it's along South Shore Drive. They will have to go in and provide sewer and water stumps to each of the lots off of South Shore Drive. But it meets all of our requirements and the planning commission recommends approval.
This was discussed last night at CDC with positive recommendations, so I so move.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the final plat of Southwood Shores Estates at 557 South Shore Drive. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries?
Item 5C has been postponed at their request till next month. Moving to item 5E, consideration to a resolution approving and modification to the Tax Increment Financing Plan for Tax Increment Financing District Number 26-2. This was discussed last night at CDC. What we're looking to do is remove some parcels from this tax increment financing with city recommendation, they still do meet the criteria as well as the increment financing to pay this back. So I would make a motion to approve this.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve a modification to Tax Increment Financing Plan, District Number 26-2. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries? The Public Works Committee, Chair Mazzina?
We'll take the first item 6A and that, that was a discussion again on the, you know, cars around the high school, but we just put in a tad more for our speed limit down those alleys. So we said, let's have this, see how it works the next six months or so and we'll come back and review it. Then we go on to item 6B, that's regards to the Flyers Gymnastics Project, they're still working on that, we're going to move that out for next month. They're still working on fundraising and when we work with them later, we wanted to have most of the money ready before we went ahead and authorized any reports about putting these streets and parking and all that stuff. So we'll move that into next month. Item 7C, had another discussion on this lake weed, we talked about it last month. Shaun went ahead and talked with the DNR again on it. You know, the trouble is, nobody really wants this lake weed and it's going to be a problem finding a location for it. It looks like the county does have a spot that everybody can bring it to in the county, but until we get that worked out, right now, the suggestion was from the DNR person that you have to lay out this stuff out for 21 days to dry and then once it's dry, you go ahead and can burn it. Well, you can imagine everybody on the lake would have burned, burned their, their weed and you'd have a real mess. So we've got to get this worked out. We did have a company here in town that said that they would pick this stuff up for everybody, but the amount came in more than what the residents wanted to pay for it. So we're still trying to work on that weed problem and we, we think we're getting closer. So hopefully by next month we can, Shaun is going to make some more contacts and just see exactly what we can. And this gal from DNR, she's going to talk to the people in St. Paul about it, so we'll see what comes up on it. what comes up on it. Next item is E, consideration of approving a resolution ordering a preparation with assessment role and setting a public hearing of a bold assessment for Campbell Avenue, Linden Lane Street with stormwater, sanitary sewer, and water main improvements. The committee recommends an ISO move, and I'd probably have Sean to give us an update on that, where we're looking at it.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, just maybe an update to build on Oldman Zeman's comments here. We took bids on this project, the Bay Area on Campbell project, last Thursday. Received four bids. The good news is, the low bid was from R. Larson, which has done a considerable amount of work in town, good contractor. Their bid was around 3.15 million, which was significantly below our estimate of 3.6 million. So that's the good news. We're not going to act on the bid tonight. We have a bid hold. We would act on that May. What you're acting on tonight is to set a public hearing, or the assessment hearing rather, so that we can issue that out and take that up at the May meeting, have the assessment hearing, then consider abort the project.
You're going to have the assessment hearing in April.
Assessment hearing would be at the May.
May, April?
Yeah, it's April now.
Well, that's right.
It's okay.
It's understandable. It's a little faster. Okay? Further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution ordering the preparation of the assessment role, setting a public hearing for those assessments for the May meeting of Campbell Avenue and Linden Lane. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Okay, the next item is I, it's a consideration of approving the resolution ordering the preparation of assessment role and set a public hearing of a proposed assessment for the Summit Avenue Street Utility Project. The committee recommends an ISO move.
Motion's been made, seconded. John, do you want to write this out?
This is identical track, Mayor and Council. We took bids. The information I'd provide on that is, again, we'll act on the bid in May after the assessment hearing, but we did get five bids on that. The apparent bidders from CNL Excavating, who's doing the Westlake Drive project right now, and that came in, I think about $100,000 below our estimate, around 1.1 million, a couple of thousand.
Hopefully, that's a trend.
Right. That'd be nice.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Okay, next item is I, consideration to a resolution accepting a preliminary engineering report for the, for the Southwood Shore Estates and setting a public hearing for seven lots. John?
Yeah, again, Mayor and Council, we prepared a preliminary engineering report, looking to take action on that, to accept that report. We're going to have a public hearing in May. Been in some discussions with the developer and his engineer regarding the report and some of the suggested improvements. We might make a few tweaks to those over the next month, but we would present those updates in May at that public hearing.
The committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Discussion? All in favor of the motion to accept the preliminary engineering report for Southwood Shore Estates, setting a public hearing? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Okay, the next item was I, consideration of approving the summer ice agreement with the DLHYHA. And I'm going to call on Sean, give a little update on that.
Mayor and Council, this is very similar to what we've done in the past with the summer ice. In July, starting July 10th, it will be the high school taking the ice for one month, and then August 7th, I believe, would be the youth hockey taking the ice, and they'll run that all the way up until October 12th, when the winter ice contract takes over.
Okay, the committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to approve the summer ice agreement with Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey Association. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Okay, next item is J, consideration of approving the summer ice agreement with the Edith Scott District 22. Sean, do you want to give an update, very similar?
Mayor and Council, that is the same. The high school will take the ice again July 10th, and that's what their contract is. They'll run through the end of July with youth hockey taking over after that.
Okay, the committee recommends an ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to approve the summer ice agreement with Detroit Lakes Youth Hockey Association. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Okay, next item is K, consideration to request from Brooklyn Clubhouse to place a tent next to the pavilion for her wedding date on May 27, 2023. We have done things like this before, and the committee recommends an ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, to approve a request to place a tent next to the pavilion for her wedding on the 27th. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Okay, the next item is Allen. I'm just going to have kind of a really crazy winter-spring combination. Sean, if you could just maybe tell us where we're at on some of this stuff. Also, we're going to get out there and get these puddles fixed, and roads and whatnot.
Well, I'll leave the puddles for Sean. But I will talk about projects as.
We'll have the engineers.
We might have to do something. So, yeah, we are starting to obviously maybe think about construction here, given the weather. So it's not inconceivable between now and the next council meeting that you actually may see some construction activity. It just depends how quickly frost gets out of the ground and road restrictions get lifted and things like that. But I want to make mention of a few things. In particular, the Westlake Drive projects, obviously, we have remaining work on both Phase 1 and 2 to finish up. That is going to involve some level of detours and closures, albeit much less significant than last year in terms of duration. I have a meeting coming up with contractors to start sorting out exactly when they'll be starting work and what the detours are going to look like and things like that. But I would expect that early part of May, hopefully, they would resume some of that work. So, again, shooting to be done by mid-June, certainly no later than late-June. Very little work left on the homes, Willow Homes and Fraser East project. There will be some corrective work that has to be done there at the Roston intersection at some point, but outside that, just some tree planting and some other minor work. Long Pius Estates, Phase 3, just a wear course to put on that street, and then that project will be wrapped up. The Becker County Museum, DLCC parking lot project, didn't get very far last year, and Howard is looking at getting started on that as soon as possible. That is one that I do think that early part of May they'll be in there. Trying to get that wrapped up before we start in on the Summit Avenue project, so get one thing finished before we start another. Talked about the Campbell Avenue project, the assessment hearing on that. That project will start later this summer, presuming that we proceed with it. Same is true with Summit Avenue. We discussed that. Next month, I think you'll probably see me bring plans and specifications for what we're kind of calling the Terry Street project. This originally started with just the extension of sewer and water mains to the food pantry location. There is a possibility that a small subdivision project would get tacked on to the end of that. The developer is still mulling that over a bit, but there's a good chance that that will be had. I'll bring that to you in May for consideration. We also have the 2023 street rehabilitation project. I need winter to fully go away, so we can advance the design on that. It could be a month, maybe two, before we bring that back. We'll see what happens. Questions?
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I think, so we need to have a few back, Kelsey?
Um, one more, do I have to move this report up?
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to accept the city engineer's budget status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries? I think we need to go back, Kelsey?
Um, one more, do I have to move this report up?
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to accept the city engineer's budget status report. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries? I think we need to go back. We'll go to the Finance Committee, Chairman Josephson.
Item B is consideration to approving the clubhouse lease agreement with American Legion Campground. Does he want to give us an overview?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this one actually kind of slipped under the radar here. Actually, it expired at the end of December of 2022. So this is, the form of the agreement is exactly the same as the last five-year agreement, it just extended it for another five years.
The Finance Committee would view this, recommends an approval and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to approve the clubhouse lease agreement with the American Legion Campground. Discussion?
One comment is, it is a dollar a year for five years, so we had a conversation at the Finance Committee meeting, and, you know, we decided that we probably didn't want to be on the front page of the newspaper by doubling their lease fees, so we decided to leave that one dollar a year.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Item B is consideration to a resolution providing for issuance and sale of approximately $11 billion in general obligation capital improvement plan on Series 2023A. Mike, do you want to?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, this resolution this evening is just providing for the issuance and sale of those bonds. This is for the new public works facility that we've been planning on and talking about for quite some time. This just allows for our bonding consultant to move forward with this process. Actually, tomorrow, I will be receiving questions from our, excuse me, our rating agency, S&amp;P, and they will be doing a bond rating on the city, on our new debt that we are looking to issue, this $11 million, and then we'll be giving an opinion on our existing debt. And so, since we just had a bond rating last fall on those issues that we did at that point, they determined that we didn't need to do a full reissue, or, I'm sorry, a full bond rating call this time around, since it was so recent. So I'll be answering some questions there, and then next May, the morning of the City Council meeting next month, we will then, if this is approved this evening, sell those bonds. We'll, we'll put that out there and get bids for that. And then at the, at the council meeting that evening, we will have our financial consultant from Baker Tilly here, Doug Green, who will present the sale results of those bonds.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, Dan? The Finance Committee reviewed this, recommends approval, ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to adopt a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of approximately $11 million in bonds for the new public works facility. Discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries? Does that conclude the agenda, Dan?
That's all I've got, Your Honor.
Okay. For the Public Control Committee, Chairperson Gools.
Thank you, Mayor. In consideration to the issuance of a consumption permit for the Historic Homes Theater, Trucks and Toons, in the June and July dates indicated at the City Park, the committee discussed and recommends approval and ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to issue a consumption permit for the Historic Homes Theater, Trucks and Toons Events, which have the various dates listed at the City Park. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
Okay, we will go to 9B, consideration to the issuance of a temporary intoxicating license for DLJC's on April 29th. The committee discussed and recommends approval and ISO move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, to issue a temporary intoxicating license for DLJC's on April 29th. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries?
No.
Mike, you have, from the Public Utilities Commission, that needs a.
Something will be brought forward today.
Any city administration items that need to come from the council?
No additions.
I am working on items A through E. I do have two asks out, and I haven't heard back yet, but I do want to recommend the name of Mark Jensen to be appointed to the Arts and Cultural Commission. Brett and Guck, of course, has resigned and is moving permanently, so I would like to recommend Mark Jensen be appointed. And I would entertain a motion.
ISO move.
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, to appoint Mark Jensen to the Arts and Cultural Commission. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries? For the Detroit Mountain Recreation Board, there are three slots open. I have recommendation for two names, our very own Jay Rainey and Lynn Peterson. I would entertain a motion that they be appointed to the Dibler Board.
ISO move or no?
Second. Motion's been made, seconded, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries? I'll try to get the rest of these wrapped up next month. Some recommendations. The Becker County Assessor has notified the city, the board to review for the 2023 assessments that we held at the Detroit Lakes Police Department on April 25th at 9:30 a.m., and I believe it's Matt, and myself, and Ron, and Dan, are committee members. We're all good with that date?
Yes.
The joint governance meeting dates are listed for the balance of the year. Also, the city council dates are listed for the balance of the year.
Mayor, if I could just add a couple of dates. You got an email about holding a council session on April 19th at 4 o'clock. My primary focus there is to talk about the pavilion project, and we'll have our consultant attend virtually via Zoom, and talk about the pavilion project, and also our board has